The Kefaner County Airport Advisory Board Special Meeting Friday the 18th, 11:00 AM. Which it is that. So we will open our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance as always. And Andy Berry will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ninety-two.
Okay, first on the agenda, we're gonna kind of whip through this because we're going to, we only have an hour. Land lease rates and durations. Currently, land lease rates are about forty cents a square foot. It kind of depends on where the lot is on the airport. I think for the last one we did with Andy, it was forty-three cents, and the ones that we did.
Sweet.
Perfect.
A lease fee now.
You're good. The last one we did with Andy was forty-three cents, and that's basically on the road. That was, what, five years ago? Six years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah. The leases that we just signed on thirty-two and thirty-three are at forty cents a foot, and they're as far away from the road as you can get. So the way I like to structure those lease rates is that if the accommodations are not great, or you're a long ways from the FBO, the ramp, the taxiway, the runway, or the roadway, your rate's lower. If you're fronting on, if you're next to the FBO, or fronting on either of the roads we have around there, your rate should be higher. So my recommendation would be, we go to forty-five cents a square foot for executive row. When that's fully leased out, as we've laid out, the proposal we had, that'll bring in about seventy grand a year. And then increase to thirty cents a square foot at Priest. Right now, it's twenty cents a square foot there.
It's forty-five cents for executive row. That's along the airport way.
Industrial.
Well, industrial drive.
Oh, that's industrial. Okay, yeah. So forty-five for those executive.
Yeah.
So dumb question. This applies to all existing? No, get it? No. It's all new forward.
Only new.
Not so dumb question.
And what is uh?
I would say thirty. Be my proposal.
What is it now?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay.
What is, uh, Coeur d'Alene charging?
Uh, they're kind of all over the map. I did send you guys the Coeur d'Alene rates.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah.
Right here.
As are our leases, are all over the map. So what we're doing is talking about leases we would implement now going forward.
Got it. Thank you. Just checking, verifying.
Um, so I have a note, Jan Lee is not with us, he's in Oshkosh, but I haven't asked him to, asked him to give us his opinion, so he sent me a note on the land lease rates and durations. He said, "All four look reasonable to me, including this single forty-year option." He's okay either way on that.
The, uh, so it looks like Coeur d'Alene is charging for a private land lease rate is twenty-five cents, and commercial is thirty-one cents. That doesn't mean we have to do that.
And one thing we want to think about is, as always, is inventory. Coeur d'Alene has a ton of land today.
Yeah.
A ton. I mean, acres and acres and acres of land to lease. We don't.
Yep.
We have seven.
I agree with that.
Oh, along. So what we have to do is, as much as possible, as possible, maximize our rates for the land, the resources that we have.
Yeah, get market at least.
Yeah. And I think, uh, we had a commercial realtor give us a lease rate, uh, basically study about ten years ago. And to be comparable with lease rates on commercial properties other, other than the airport, the area on executive row should be at about a buck a foot. That was ten years, ten, fifteen, twelve years ago. We thought that was optimistic at the time. Given the fact that you also have to consider your market, right?
Yeah, for sure.
You can say, "Hey, it would be ten bucks a foot." Nobody'll build. But you've got to understand what is expected of an airport like ours, and what the market, who is likely to come in for that?
Well, yeah, and a commercial real estate agent is not going to understand the fact that you're going to be obligated to, uh, federal and local regulations requiring that. You can't even do anything with the hangers that put a plane in it and maybe work on it.
You are definitely restricted.
So you can't put an excavating company in there, plumbing company in there, like you could on any other land.
Special environment.
Very special. So you can't charge the same rates.
So even if you cut that in half, fifty cents, we're still below that.
Yeah, totally. I agree with the rates. That way you.
Anyway, go.
I agree.
Forty-five cents for executive row?
Forty-five cents for executive row? But what's your, what's your circle? Like, you're doing this circle out. Further away is forty-seven, forty-five cents, and then closer, you know, less can be.
The lowest rate we're doing right now, and actually, it's kind of irrelevant, because we don't have any more land to lease. The only, the only land we have to lease at Sandpoint is on executive row.
Yeah, okay.
But the lowest rate we did for the ones we did, like thirty-two and thirty-three, that are down at the south end of Charlie.
Yeah.
Was forty cents a foot.
I would say anything adjacent to industrial should be at the forty-five cents.
Yeah.
Anything off should be at the lesser.
Well, we have one.
Right.
If you remember the layout, I didn't bring it. But if, we, we have one set of, um, basically small box hangers.
Yep.
That are not, uh, fronting on.
Right.
Uh, industrial drive. So those could be forty-two cents, forty cents, or whatever.
Yeah.
Because the other, the thing with those is they're, they are farther away from the ramp, access to the runway. So you get a taxi all the way out from there. I mean, it's time on the engine, it's, it's traffic that you're going to run into. It's just, it's just a little more, it's less desirable.
Yep, yep, yep. Good.
Does that make sense?
I'm good with all that, yeah.
Uh, okay, what about, you guys are doing great. What about thirty cents at Priest?
That's fine.
Fine.
Perfect. Unruled. Lease durations. Currently, uh, thirty-year initial term and twenty-year optional extension at lessees discretion, which I am assuming that all of the lessees are going to take that extension, because the county can't, the county doesn't have a say. It's totally at the lessees discretion.
The option is kind of silly.
It really is.
It really is.
I don't know why we do it.
I don't know why we do it either. It was, it was the way it was set up before I got here.
So weird.
And fifty is actually the, the limit that the FAA likes to see, uh, because they follow the IRS for depreciation schedules, and fifty years is what is pretty normal. Anything beyond that, they consider a taking of the public land, because you're going through multi-generations then. Um, so, uh, that forty is very common. Just a straight forty, single forty-year term is very common at other airports around. Um, as I say, I think if we were to go less than forty, we're going to start impacting the market that is, it's going to be, it's not going to be desirable.
I agree.
Because what we're talking about, especially at Sandpoint, is pretty significant investment in those lots. I mean, they're all either, well, the, the bigger ones, the bigger hanger ones, you know, an eighty-by-hundred-foot hanger's going to be more than a million bucks right now.
Oh, yeah.
As Andy can attest.
For sure.
Even the smaller ones, the, you know, the condominium style we're talking about, you're going to be more than a million bucks in there, maybe two million.
Well, in industrial way, you got to figure all those street improvements. You got to widen the street, curves, gutters, landscaping.
Significant investment.
Ramps.
Steel structure.
Parking, steel structure. I, I don't know, you might get a couple idiots to go for forty years on those industrial way, but, sorry, I should probably. But the, but, um, but you, but I think if you're going to spend that kind of money, I, fifty years for a steel structure with street improvements, sidewalks, landscaping, parking, storefront, I, my guess is if, if somebody's going to propose an awesome building like that with those things, we should probably, and they want fifty years.
You want to tier that as well? Fifty-year for the larger structures and forty for the?
We, well, they're all larger structures, actually. The only one that's smaller is that one five-plex.
In the corner.
In the corner, in the upper corner, kind of behind, uh, where the beach hangers are. So I guess what I would say is, we could start with forty and have that be a negotiating point in the lease, depending on the improvements that the developer's going to put in.
At least that's what I was going to add, was, is, if you have all those multiple improvements that are going to cost a lot of money, then it should be extended.
Then we, it's in our best interest to max it, so that they get the most benefit.
Right.
Because we can only go to fifty years anyway.
Yeah.
So.
Right, yeah.
I would, I don't think that's a problem. So start with forty, and then negotiate up to fifty. Right?
Yep.
Yes.
With no options.
No, just a single term.
Yeah, straight.
Uh, county-owned hanger lease rates. I've always run the county-owned, like, as I say, I've always run the county-owned hanger lease rates higher than the commercial operators to avoid undercutting private enterprise. We own two hangers at Sandpoint, both renting at above-market rates.
What is that rate per foot?
I think the one, so the Smith hanger, which is, the old Smith hanger, which is sixty by sixty, uh, is currently, I think, at forty-three cents.
Yeah, so you're probably below market right now.
Well, no, that's for month. So that's fifteen hundred bucks a month.
So what's the, it was sixty, what's the size of it?
Sixty by sixty.
And it's fifteen hundred a month?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're forty-one cents, forty-two cents. You should be up around sixty-five cents.
Sixty-five?
Yep.
Keep up with the times.
I will.
So what's that a month?
That's sixty-five cents.
I should be able to calculate in my head, right?
I'll ask you.
I rely too much.
Ever since we got phones.
Twenty-three forty.
Twenty-three forty?
Yeah, two thousand three hundred forty dollars.
A month.
A month, yeah. Yeah, so you should be up there. That's at sixty-five cents at the minimum.
Eight thousand.
Industrial flex space right now in Sandpoint is going for closer to a dollar when you don't have the limitations at the airport.
So you're below the market value.
Well, I was going.
You're doing exactly what you said you don't want to do.
No, I, I totally understand. I was looking at, for instance, uh, the rates you're charging for your box hangers.
Yeah, but those have no insulation, no, nothing.
Neither does.
Well, then you might go and do that.
It's just a shell, no heat, no electrical, no insulation.
Oh, that makes a difference.
However, however, we have a grant offer from ITD to insulate and heat that hanger. So we would have justification for raising the rate.
Yeah. And also that's.
Would the rate increase change any of that offer?
No. The grant, the grant offer is, ITD had some extra money laying around, and so they said, "Hey, let's get some to the airports," and we said, "Hell, yes." So we actually asked for a whole new snow removal equipment building. Well, in addition onto the hanger we're talking about is what we asked for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because it doesn't have offices, it doesn't have tool room, it doesn't have rest rooms, doesn't have anything in there. So what we asked for was an addition onto that. And what they gave us was a portion of that, which will allow us to insulate and heat it, which is a step in the right direction. It also allows us good justification to raise the rate.
Absolutely, for sure.
So, because right now, it's just a shell, and it has minimal lighting and no electrical, minimal electrical. So, uh, once we have that, assuming the commissioners accept that grant, once we have that, those improvements to that building in place, I'm buying the reason to raise the rate again.
Yeah.
What about the other one, then?
The other one is Lifelight, and it's renting at, I think, thirty-six hundred dollars a month. They have, they put about a hundred grand in improvements into that hanger when they took it, because they built that whole crew quarter space. So.
Let's see. Fix the door. I recall.
Yeah. That was part of the leasing agreement.
No comment.
That was part of the agreement.
We wouldn't risk losing them, would we?
No. I wouldn't recommend raising the rate on that space. They put so much money into it, A, they're a great community resource, right? Having those guys here is good for us. B, they put so much money into that hanger that I would like, hmm. They have, they have a new, excuse me, their lease term comes up in two years, in twenty-twenty-seven. We can revisit it at that time. That would be my recommendation.
So if you're going to do that, and you're going to make what I'm going to call an exception to the other rule, when you start mixing and matching this stuff.
Sixty percent of our.
Shouldn't you be like, "Hey, if you make improvements, we'll look at, you know, holding you," or, you know what I mean? Because if you're spending a hundred grand making improvements on a building that's owned by the county, that has to stay, right? I mean, those improvements have to stay with the building, even if they don't pay up. You should have some kind of a discussion about that, to where it's kind of like, this is where we're at, and if you, you know, because maybe that building you're talking about that's a shell, let's just forget that there's a grant out there, somebody puts a bunch of money into it because they want it better. And if, if, if they hold the rate, or reduce the rate, or whatever, because of the investment, you're going to do that for one, but you have to do it for all. I, I understand what you're saying.
For the county-owned hangers. We have two.
Yes, yes.
And we do, we issue rent credits. And we've done that with other improvements that people have done at the airports, like taxiways or water lines or whatever. So we do a rent credit kind of thing. That is our policy.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not going around policy at all, if that was your concern. Each one is going to be individual, each, because it depends on what they're doing and the value to us. Like, if somebody wanted to put a sauna in one of the hangers.
Yeah, that doesn't.
Yeah, 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 no.
Depends. Yeah, so it'd be a list of what I've been.
You gotta have take your sauna.
Sauna's out now. Red light state.
I'm like, yeah, you know, that's not valuable to us.
Yeah, revisit that in a year and a half.
And we have two, there's no, there's no more coming? Two counties and no more coming?
There are more coming, because at the end of the lease terms, the, the county, the hanger reverts to the county. But we don't have many of those coming up. Kenny Jackson's coming up, but not until nineteen, or twenty thirty-six is the next one, I think.
That's a long way out.
Well, for us, it's a long way out.
Yeah, for us, those are folks.
Somebody's going to be sitting in this, in this chair at that point, and so they're going to have to deal with it. So what we don't want to do is create pitfalls for them.
Yes.
Like we are solving now, because someone wasn't that, what we're thinking back in the day.
A hundred percent agree with that.
This may or may not be related, but, uh, and adjacent to, like, the Lifelight facilities. Do we have anything for when the firefighter people come into town? Is there anything that's county or?
The south ramp typically.
We try to put them all on the south ramp, at the south end of the south ramp, uh, behind taxiway, taxiway Charlie. When we get overcrowded, which we have, we've had a couple operators down there, and we have to put one up just north of Lifelight, on the grass, so.
I mean, we don't want to ever bump them.
No, 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 we want to, we want to keep those guys operational.
Yeah, industrial way. Um, all right.
Sounds good.
Do we even need to do it?
So what was it? We were forty-three, and we're sixty-five. What happened with that?
Well, no, it's.
We're going to revisit.
And that's in two years.
Well, we're talking about the Smith hanger. We can, we'll revisit that once those improvements are placed. The heat and the isolation.
Yeah, no, for sure. But the, um.
And then Lifelight will revisit when their lease comes up.
Yeah, and the problem, well, I'll say, one thing about Lifelight to keep in mind is that, so, yeah, I get it, and they're providing a service, but at the end of the day, it's still a business. And when everybody else is, let's say, people, other people are leasing out hangers, and somebody, you know, come to a business, and they go, "Hey, you know, what's, what do you charge on? I'm charging sixty-five cents," you know, that's, that's, the going rate's a great rate, right? That's actually not a bad deal at all. And they say, "Oh, but look, with the county, it only charges Lifelight thirty-two cents a foot."
Right.
And that's a nicer hanger. So that's why the issue when you have with the market, the thing, and you're like, well, they now got county, which isn't, which isn't necessarily accountable for its spending, is like a private person.
For profit, right.
And the, um.
Should be.
It should be, yeah. Should be, but, you know, so, so then you're competing, obviously.
That's why we're talking.
Yeah, exactly. So I would keep that in mind.
So, and I think that's, that's a good thing to talk about. And when it comes up, when Lifelight's lease comes out, because their rate is written into the lease.
Yeah.
Uh, in two years, a year and a half, then we need to have that conversation with them. Because this will be their, so they're in their eighth year here. They had two five-year terms in their, in their lease. So at the end, they'll have been here ten years. I think that's probably a fair rent credit for the improvements that they made.
Oh, yeah.
So I think that, even if it was a hundred grand, I mean, even, you know, how much I said, over ten years. And again, to Andy's point, they are a for-profit business.
Yes.
So, I mean, they provide a nice service, but they're a for-profit business.
So what if the door falls off on one of yours? Who fixes?
It's my responsibility.
See, there's, there's, there's all this others.
But it, it was Lifelight's responsibility too, in their lease, to fix that door.
That's what I say, because he says if it falls off on his building, and Lifelight's in.
But that's not in my lease, yeah.
On his, on his hangers, it's his responsibility.
Yeah, when, when my lease amount to him, it's like, so if I, like Tamrac, for example, I lease it out.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, but in my lease, it says, I'm cover, I, my, I'm responsible.
I cover all.
I cover responsible for the shell, basically.
So you have to reevaluate that, because that has value. I mean, if the county had to run out there and fix that door, and it was on them, that, that raises the lease rate.
So those are in, those are terms in the lease itself.
Understood.
And if, so that would be, you know, you're responsible for the entire building, including the door. Here's your lease rate.
Understood. But it does then kind of justify the downward, you know, the, the way it's, it's lower, because they are responsible for that, any improvements, or any maintenance on the building.
I would say that in, in any of the county-owned hangers where we're reducing the lease rate, the monthly lease rate for the building, not the annual lease rate for the land, I would, I would agree with that. In any of the hangers that are, uh, leases that are going to expire, you know, in the next ten years or something, eh, it could be a negotiation. But all of those leases have CPI increases written into the lease. So there's, we're not changing any of those old leases. We can change the hanger leases, because, uh, on the Smith hanger, it's a month-to-month lease. And on Lifelight, if, they have two more years in their lease. Those are the really the only ones that we can change, in terms of what we're getting for leasing hangers.
Yeah.
And those, and we're talking about what we're going to do there, so.
What's Coeur d'Alene doing?
You know, on their, I think they have a couple of county-owned hangers, but I don't remember.
Selfishly, I wouldn't want to lose Lifelight in two years.
You know, they're everywhere.
Yeah.
And, and this is a really good business model. I've been watching on ADSB Exchange, I've been watching some of the fires. Those guys are flying all the time. Liflight, not, not firefighters, but Lifelight out of Sandpoint are flying all the time, day and night. They're making money.
They're doing just fine.
They're just doing just fine. And they're looking out for their interests, as are we.
Yeah.
And again, Coeur, Coeur d'Alene's rates are somewhat relevant, only from a regulatory standpoint, in that we are supposed to be commensurate with other airports in our region. However, even that section of the grant assurances says, "Based on the economic conditions at your airport." And one of those economic conditions, like, like we talked about, is our inventory. We don't have a hell of a lot of inventory, so we need to maximize what we've got. And keep in mind, this is, we're seeing still a spike in interest in Sandpoint, and we're trying to project a baseline for the next fifty years, or forty years anyway. Because you have CPI increases in that, in those leases, but that's all you have. And CPI doesn't, as you know, doesn't take into account land values. No, it's just stuff. So looking at land values around here, CPI increases are not even, are not going to be keeping up with land value increases.
It should be based more on cash, you know, doesn't necessarily, I don't think it should go with land value, land values, but I think it should go with actual inflation, because that's the cost of doing business. That's not the cost of purchasing ground, it's the cost of doing business. It's supposed to keep up with the cost of doing business, not the value of land. So that's.
True, true.
Yeah.
And I, and I agree with that to a degree. What the FAA would like us to see, like us to do, what their guidance is, that you bring it to market every five years, and do CPI increases every year.
Yeah.
That's what their guidance is. I didn't.
That might be easier in the new leases, to get, to do the CPI increases, increases every year. It's just going to require this county staff to, to tell them what the, yeah.
And that's not a difficult thing. I just use the, my BLS calculator.
Totally, just send a notice out.
Send a note, says, "Here's what it is."
Yeah, it's going to be, yeah.
And I send, I actually screenshot the calculator and send it to folks, and it's just, it is what it is.
So for the new leases, did you just agree that that's probably the way it should be set up, to where it's CPI, and then five years it should be market?
We're having a discussion right now.
I think I agree with that, especially if that's what they want. I mean, it seems.
Well, that's, that's not what they require. Because again, back to, that's their guidance.
Right.
What they're, what they go back to is, what are the economic conditions at your particular airport? Would, would the economic conditions support this? If they will, you should do that. If they won't, you have more free rein to do what you need to do. So I don't mind going to market adjustment every five years, and, excuse me, CPI every year. That's acceptable.
But it still allows you, what you just described is, if the market rate allows it, then it would be upwards. If it doesn't, it could actually be downward, right? It'd be like.
Better.
What I'm, what I'm saying though.
One-way street.
I understand, but I was just trying to, I was just trying to see if I liked Dave's attention. See if Dave was actually listening.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, no, it's one-way street.
Every.
There is, there is language in the CPI increases, uh, only increase. There's never a decrease. Well, that hasn't been a decrease over the last twenty-five years.
There's even a built-in acceleration, where it's always going up. It doesn't just stay the same. It goes up constantly.
Two percent.
Yeah, or we do an adjustment for market, every five, every check, yeah.
So on average, over the last twenty-five years, the CPI has been two-point-four-two.
But CI kind of does.
Three-point-four-two.
Yeah, two-point-four-two.
Two-point-four-two.
Even including the last very inflationary years.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's like.
Well, it's such a big.
If you make a motion to accept the change in land lease rates to, uh, what'd you say, forty-five cents? For our executive row, and then thirty cents for Priest River?
If, yeah, so like, we can make a single motion that handles all of these.
All of the, yeah, all the discussed.
Okay.
Uh, so that was county-owned hanger lease rates.
I know.
If we remember, yeah. I don't feel used. It's currently six bucks a night, thirty bucks a month. It's never been adjusted in the time I've been here. Eight dollars a night and eighty dollars a month is what I'm recommending. Jan Lee had a point on, or an opinion on it. He said, "I'd be okay with the eight dollars a night. Eighty bucks a month is a pretty sizable increase, but only because the rate has been so low for so long."
Yeah.
And I totally agree with that sentiment. So although sixty dollars a month would be a compromise, eighty really doesn't sound that out of line. And that's one of the challenges that we run into, well, anybody. And that's one of the challenges that we run into, well, anybody, everybody does. If you don't continually increase your rates every year, then you have to bring somebody to market. It gets like, holy crap.
Yeah, it's crazy.
I'm getting screwed. No, you're not. You're actually still, still at marketer below. You just have, have been having a sweetheart deal for the last thirty or forty or whatever you have.
Yeah. So Coeur d'Alene, not to keep bringing up Coeur d'Alene or other airports, but we kind of, it does make sense. Coeur d'Alene currently is at six dollars and forty dollars. Um, they have more ramp space, as you said, and we are shy on ramp space. Um, so.
Yeah, we're at a premium.
My, yeah, my thought would be the eight and.
Sixty?
And sixty. Um, I think, and then if, you know, revisited in two years, maybe one up to eighty. But that would seem like, we're still, you know, fifty percent higher than, than Coeur d'Alene.
Which, again, great, looking down on Coeur d'Alene.
Yeah.
It's, we're, we are a unique market here. It's cheaper up in Bonner Ferry too. If people, but people want to be in Sandpoint. If they want to be in Sandpoint, it's a little bit more expensive, justifiably, because we don't have a lot of revenue sources.
There's nothing there.
And we, and we have a lot of, we got twenty-seven acres of pavement at Sandpoint. Twenty-seven, and we're putting in more. Pavement is really expensive, as anybody who's paved recently knows.
Oh, boy.
It's exceedingly expensive.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with eighty bucks.
And we're, we're just talking about maintaining, this isn't paying for any capital improvements. This is only talking about maintaining what we've already got.
What's Priest River's rates?
Same, sixty and thirty, six dollars and thirty. And I would move it at both airports.
To the same.
Yeah. It just makes it simple.
Tie-down hearing. Sounds great.
Before you vote, is your change more than five percent?
In some cases, yes.
You have to do a public hearing.
Isn't this the public hearing?
No.
No, it's the, this is your one to say you want it, and then your public hearing is to let everybody complain.
That we're doing it. Okay. I wondered about that.
And, and new fees too.
It wasn't advertised as a public hearing?
Well, I think if the public hearing.
It's a public meeting.
Get a lot of pushback at that jump. I really do. But if you gotta do it, you gotta do it.
It's, it is, I looked at the code.
Yeah, five percent would be six dollars and thirty cents. Going to six, six-thirty is not good enough.
We have to give a shout out to Veronica because she said they're talking about changing it. I said, okay.
And that's thirty-one.
It was gonna be something I brought up as well.
And, and that's fine.
It's gonna require a big meeting, okay?
That's fine. Cause, so then I'm assuming we publish the proposed fees for the public meeting. Okay.
Publish the fee change.
So we will do a recommendation at this meeting to change the fees. We publish the fee change and then we have a public hearing and people would.
Complain.
Yeah, we, we can just recommend.
Right. And then the commissioners decide what the heck they want to do. That's all we do is we advise.
Advise.
And again, I think, I think where you're gonna get a lot of pushback with an open meeting is if Coeur d'Alene is cheaper, Bonner Ferry, you can say the same thing. Well, they, you know. We don't have as much parking space as Coeur d'Alene, but neither does Bonner Ferry, but they still charge less. So. If we're that far outside of the norm, I think you're gonna see a lot of pushback at that rate. Maybe fifty, you know, and that's more than fifty percent increase. But I'm just throwing that out there because I think you're gonna get a lot of pushback if anybody comes to the meeting.
I am not concerned about pushback. And I don't mean, I don't mean to be cavalier or uncaring about the people, but to me, eighty bucks a month for a tie-down space at any airport, that's not a bad deal.
But yeah, but again, the problem you have is two airports within twenty-five miles of us are charging less. Why are we twice, three times more than almost? If they're thirty and we go to eighty, we're almost three times the amount. Is that, is that, is that a fair market value? Not just what you want, but is that fair for the area? And I say no.
The fact of the matter.
I don't use a tie-down. I, I have a hanger. It's not an issue, but I still think about, is that a fair reassessment? I think it's unfair to jump that much.
So the fact of the matter is, in my opinion, and I've dealt with all of these fees and different water and sewer and, you know, everybody's like, well, they're less than you are. But what you have to realize is, just because they're charging less, doesn't mean they're even covering their costs. So you have to take a, you have to kind of. Use that as a, like a point of view, but yet not get stuck on it. Because if it hasn't been raised since you've been here, which is how long, Dave?
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years, it hasn't been raised, then obvious is low. It's just about how much too low it is.
It needs to be raised.
And I agree with what you're saying, Jeff. Um, but again, if we're. Almost three times the amount and they're doing it, maybe they're not paying their bills with that, I don't know. I doubt that Coeur d'Alene has that problem. But if we're almost three times the amount, that seems. Aggressive.
It is, it is.
And the only reason that it is that aggressive is that.
Haven't raised it.
Seventeen years.
But could Coeur d'Alene, I guess people could argue the same thing down there. Coeur d'Alene can argue, Bonner Ferry, where, you know, I don't even know what Bonner Ferry charges. I'm, I'm just saying this as a. And I gotta tell you, when I was in Steamboat Springs ten years ago, I was paying three bucks a month. I get this, I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is, is that. The comparables within a twenty-five mile range are gonna be one-third. Should we go that? That's my point is, should we make, e- even though it hasn't been done in a long time, should we make a, maybe a fifty percent increase as opposed to a, almost a?
It'd be a hundred percent increase, go to sixty bucks.
If you go sixty, I'm saying fifty.
So, so the thing is though, is like, again, we're kind of basing it off of, and they have alternative ways of making money. So it, it's, it's like, well, you're so restricted on. Area, so it's restricts how much money you overall can make to support your airport. So are, is it more? You're sure it's more.
And to throw another wrench into it, you have, a simple thing as a tie-down overnight fees, amenities at the airport, Priest River, we don't have anything down there. But yeah, it would be the same cost as Sandpoint. We've got no fuel.
Yeah, but the cost of the, the cost of the tie-down is, of the asphalt space and.
Right, right, right.
Well, and the upkeep of it, yeah. I mean, again, same thing, you don't have the amount of money generation.
Yeah, yeah.
The same thing with this is, if you compare it to Coeur d'Alene, it doesn't compare because in Coeur d'Alene, they can charge less because they've got tons of area.
Recent, yeah, income resources.
What about Bonner Ferry that doesn't have that option?
That's a good question, but again, have they chosen just to stay away from it, just like this group has apparently, or whatever? It's a possibility. It's a, it's a good possibility.
What does Coer?
I think we should just propose the eighty and. Eighty and.
And.
Oh, uh, six-five.
Yeah, see what pushback, and just go and get some discussion. Because we're just.
Hey, Asia. So being that this board doesn't make decisions, this is a, this is only.
Advisory.
Advice that we're giving. I don't think that we have to abide by those rules. That's just you guys. Because you're making the actual decision. All we're doing is say, push this forward at this rate.
No, so, so it's that it doesn't go into play until those requirements are met. That's what I'm saying. So you guys are giving the recommendation, but your recommendation still requires that we notice the public change before that gets voted on to actually implement the change.
Well, no, I think you have to have.
Yeah, we don't have to.
You have to have the public hearing, not us.
So I'm saying, we can't, so the point of saying it was just that nothing actually changes until that step takes place.
Oh, okay. I guess, so then you could vote on it, push it forward and then they.
Yeah, your vote is for us to move the ball forward, but nothing can technically change until that has.
Right. And then, and they can change it all. If they decide that eighty's too much, they can change it to whatever they want. This is just recommendations based on.
Correct. So once you vote, then you'll give it to these ladies and then we have to publish it and then put it out there.
Okay, just, I know that Dave kind of touched on that, but I was just making sure that everybody's on the same page here.
All right, well, should we vote? Because we're gonna run out of time. We have more topics.
We have more topics. So what do we want to recommend?
I'd like to make a, uh, motion to recommend to the Bonner County Board of Commissioners that we increase the. Uh, tie-down rates to eight dollars and, uh, eight dollars a night, eighty dollars a month. Um, and then do the lease rates for executive row to.
We're not moving, motioning in.
Oh, we're not?
Well, we can, but we don't have to. We have other things we need to talk about.
Oh, well, you don't, you don't, I'm sure.
You're gonna try to gob it all into one.
Because that's gonna get a note.
Okay.
You might as well just do one thing at a time, otherwise you're gonna turn it all down.
All right, so you want to, in your motion then?
Yeah.
You want to do land lease rates and durations, county-owned hanger lease rates, tie-down fees, all in that same motion?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Are you changing anything that you recommended on the sheet? I didn't really change anything, did you?
I don't think there's any changes.
So you could just motion that you.
As it's as provided.
Yeah.
And that'll make it cleaner, so then you attach it.
Thank you. Uh, the only thing we're talking about changing, well, no, we're not changing anything at the moment. Except, yeah, yeah, we can just do that as presented.
I didn't hear you change what you wrote, so.
No, it's.
Did you say I was presented?
We're adopting the recommendations.
Yeah, I would, uh, move to recommend, uh, to the Bonner County Board of Commissioners that we. That we approve or recommend.
Recommend.
Right, we recommend the land lease rates and durations as written, the county-owned hanger lease rates as, uh, written and recommended by the, uh, airport manager. And the tie-down fees as recommended by the airport manager.
So second.
Second in.
And moving second in. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Bob Del Val.
No on the ramp fees. I say no.
On the tie-down fees.
On the tie-down fees, yeah.
Oh, with the other aspects?
Yes, yes, on the lease rate.
Okay.
And the county, where, did, did we do county as well? The county one in there? Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Joe Grant, Jeff, Andy. Was that, what was that? Yes.
It's very, Andy, on the.
And I vote yes as well. And Jan, through his proxy sent to me, uh, votes yes, but he recommends sixty, well, no, he said eighty, eighty dollars a month really doesn't sound that out of line. So he voted yes on all those as well. Are you thoroughly confused, ladies?
You can't count his.
Yeah, you can't count him.
Yeah, so.
But it doesn't matter, I guess.
It doesn't matter, but your motion, his motion was to do what you said. He dissented, but your motion passes to do what it said. Do you guys get it?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Cause that kind of kicks him when he took one piece of it. He's out, he's a no.
You're a no. His was a no vote.
But that's all right. We understand where you're coming from and I, okay, don't necessarily disagree.
Well, and again, this is a recommendation. It may change when it comes through for the commissioners. It's just what we're recommending right now. Okay, landing fees. The big kahuna. Everybody read all the documentation? And you looked at the. Sandbox, the Sandpoint Airport sandbox and. What were your thoughts?
Seemed extremely excessive. The, and that's all things considered when you look at, um, other airports around the area. So. Coeur d'Alene, they charge a, I, I actually looked at this quite a bit and I was surprised about how many airports do this, which their new system is actually pretty unique. Software that, that they use to collect it, like you guys, the county doesn't have to do much. It's not for the program, everything is handled. Now, it's a steep twenty percent. I mean, that's, that's, that's steep. But, um, but whatever, it's cheaper than hiring somebody. Um.
Well, far cheaper than hiring somebody. And it, and it will get, what they do, I don't know if you guys saw that, they send us an ADS-B exchange receiver. That we stick on an antenna, a mast, hopefully at our FPL. And they then gather that information and bill everybody.
Yeah.
And send us a check.
So David recommended seven dollars every thousand.
I didn't recommend.
Okay, sorry.
I'm just saying, if we did this, that's what we would get.
Gotcha.
If we don't want to do that, we can do whatever we want.
So go on in.
Well, you said manager's recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry, my manager.
All right.
Nice way to turn it around.
Um, so just looking at, he, that's the recommendations for seven dollars for all weights. Um, no?
No.
Okay, what do you, what do you got going? Explain to me then.
Oh, it's seven dollars for twelve, so that's seven dollars for twelve-five and above.
Okay.
Five dollars for nine thousand to twelve-five. Four dollars for five thousand pounds to nine thousand pounds.
So everything, what's, what's your cutoff to where no one, nothing gets charged?
Five thousand pounds.
So four, four-nine-nine-nine and under.
Yeah, which is almost all GA aircraft.
GA, yeah.
Where you start getting into, and why we talked about doing five thousand pounds, at five thousand pounds is because some of the light jets are just over five, between five and nine.
Yeah.
If we don't do any, uh, between five and nine, which we can not do those at all, and just do nine to twelve. Nine gets in turboprops, uh, King, lighter King airs, PC12s, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
And then twelve-five and above is all the bigger stuff.
What, I'm agreeing on this. What does this do to Kodiak?
Kodiak is, the max gross landing weight is seventy-three. I have a recommendation on that as well. Now, now, and it, it applies to other, because that, that comes into the exemptions. So we would talk about that. So.
Yeah, I mean, the.
So what do we want to charge and who do we want to charge it to? And then do we want to have any exemptions? And the exemptions have to be equitable.
Yeah.
So if we want to talk about that exemption right now, I'm happy to.
Um, well, let's first look at, I think we should first look at what every, all the other airports charge, because this is one to where it's not really based off of. Our, our, uh, space like we do with tie-downs and that sort of stuff, industrial way. This is more based off of what everybody's in charge, because none of these, most of these people aren't based here, they're coming in, right? Or a lot of them. Um, and so they, they're gonna know exactly what they're charged the last five places they've been. Um, and they're charged at a lot of places. I was surprised when I looked into it, how many, almost, most airports of our size and bigger do this. Um, the, so right now, Coeur d'Alene is at two, nothing below.
Ten thousand, I think.
No, nothing below ten thousand. Nothing below ten thousand pounds. Tower support fee only, so they have that. Um.
So that, what is that?
A dollar per thousand pounds. That's for aircraft fire, that's for fire suppression aircraft. So basically, Coeur d'Alene, and this is for a tower support, because they have, they'd have, put, recently had to put in a tower during fire season. So this, this one is mostly for, uh, support of the tower operations, which is why they did it, which kind of makes sense. We don't have a tower. But they're charging ten thousand to forty thousand pounds, two dollars seventy-five cents a pound. So that's, we are looking at seven dollars for a lot of those aircraft. And all the way down to four dollars for some of the smaller ones. So we're way higher than them for that. So if you look at Sun Valley. Sun Valley is free material. Sun Valley, um, and I think there's a massive difference between Part 139 airports, which have scheduled service and us as well. Cause they are obviously significantly more cost involved. Uh, but Sun Valley has, uh, aircraft landing fee, uh, two dollars and twenty-five cents, same thing, six thousand to forty thousand. Um, another good spot. Now, they are charging below six thousand pounds, but Sun Valley, I've flown in there a whole ton of times, they don't like general aviation. They don't want general aviation. So they're, they're pushing to not have general aviation.
Palm Springs is the same way.
Yeah, Palm Springs is the exact same way. They want to push it to Bermuda or any of those other spots.
Yep, yep.
Um, so looking at their, their two dollars twenty-five cents. Moscow Pullman, which I think is another good example, but they're also Part 139. They are. Pullman rates, they're at a dollar fifteen. Now, that's for scheduled, per thousand pounds, that's for scheduled air carrier. Um, landing fees, they charge a dollar twenty-five for anything over seven thousand pounds. Um, once again, significantly less than what we're looking at. Um, so, and they don't charge anything under seven thousand pounds. Unless you're a scheduled aircraft carrier, then they charge, um, a dollar fifteen. So still one significantly less.
Okay, so I'll go to the other side of that argument. Aspen, nine eighteen, per thousand pounds, all weights.
Yep.
That's not comparable.
That is not.
Neither is actionable.
Neither is actionable.
How about Driggs? Want to give me Driggs?
Go for it. What's Driggs?
Six thousand, I'm sorry, six dollars per thousand pounds, greater than nine thousand. Eight dollars per thousand pounds, uh, for a night arrival.
So we're still higher than Driggs.
That's, it's, I'm, above nine thousand?
Oh, I mean, I know, we're right in there.
That depends on the breaking point, I think.
Yeah.
Uh. How about Deer Park and Bonner? Does Bonner charge?
No.
They don't have, they don't have one.
Deer Park doesn't charge.
What about Deer Park?
Deer Park doesn't charge.
No. Uh, so what I looked at, we are considered a general aviation, non-hub regional. So I looked at the comparison that they had sent me, I sent it to you guys as well, and looked through all those. Um, Heber City, Utah. Five bucks flat fee up to seventy-nine-hundred pounds, five, five dollars per thousand pounds above eight thousand. Similar to what we're talking about, or what I'm proposing. Rifle, Colorado, General Leavison Regional, four dollars and seventy cents per thousand pounds above ten thousand pounds. Uh, Logan, Utah, three dollars per thousand pounds. Logan, Utah, three dollars per thousand pounds, greater than six thousand, four dollars, greater than fifteen thousand. It goes down from there. And one of the things when I was talking with the sales lady, was, sales lady, which is, that's what they're doing, because they're making money on this as well. Many of the lower rates that you see are because they haven't adjusted rates very recently, in fact, for years. So the higher rate, now, Coeur d'Alene did in twenty twenty-four. Right, so there's always going to be an outlier.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But she's talking about the thousand or so airports that they deal with.
Yeah.
Another salient point here, I think, is that in the, let me go back to my email, I asked her about this as well. For operators at Sandpoint that are greater than five thousand pounds, ninety-six percent of them are already in their system paying fees. Ninety-six percent. For operators over twelve-five, a hundred percent of the operators at Sandpoint are already in their system paying fees. So this is going to be, they're paying a monthly fee for all their operations, wherever those airplanes happen to go. This is going to be added onto that. It's not like we're going to be hitting people all of a sudden with, oh, my God, landing fees, those guys are screwing us.
You know, again, I'm going to, I'm going to go back to my argument about consistency with other airports. If we're higher, it looks egregious, and AOPA is aggressively challenging airports that are overcharging fees, particularly landing fees and ramp fees. Mostly it's FBOs, it's usually not the county, I get that, it's mostly the FBOs charging obnoxious ramp fees.
Signature.
Yeah, I found signature to be in some, I don't know, not consistent, I, you know, but anyway. What we're at FELTS, they're actually pretty good over there.
Pretty steep at International, though.
Maybe International doesn't want.
That's a whole different avenue there, go down. But anyway, I know AOPA, there was just an article about a month or two ago, about challenging airports that are charging aggressive fees, and so.
And frankly, out of this meeting, we don't have to come with a recommendation on landing fees. We can, we can think about it, have a discussion about it, we can set another meeting, we can do it in October if we want to.
Yeah.
We don't have to adopt this immediately, and I totally agree that it should take considerable consideration before we start doing this. And Jan Lee speaks to this, he says, oh, I hate to see us go down this rabbit hole. I'm sure most GA pilots don't want fees for anything under five to six thousand pound gross weight. Everyone wants someone else to pay, especially the big boys. If I read it right, Coeur d'Alene charges for eight thousand pounds and over, and I wish I was going to be here to actually hear this exploration and discussion on this one.
Well, to key in later.
It would seem that when private companies are flying into Sandpoint with passengers and using the airport for a profit, a landing fee would be appropriate. We have so many TBM, Pilatus, citations, et cetera, that are privately owned, and I could see some feedback from those folks, since most of them are paying big property taxes as well as buying avgas. I look forward to reading the minutes. I wish I could be there.
Is there exemptions for local or no exemption?
Yeah, what were you thinking?
No, we're talking, so, what I was thinking in terms of, whatever we do here, exemptions would be people that are renting county-owned hangars.
So the two.
The two.
Okay.
Kodiak and Lifeline. Because they are, they're, like, for instance, the Kodiak hangar, they're, they're paying eighteen thousand dollars a year to rent that. That goes right directly to maintenance.
Yeah.
That's essentially the same as a landing fee, far more than most people, most operators are going to be paying. Lifeline's even paying more than that, they're like thirty-six hundred bucks a month. So they're paying far more for maintenance here than anybody, any other operator would. So we can put landing fees on them. Oftentimes, Lifeline-type organizations are exempt, firefighting organizations are often exempt, this is just policy at other airports. State sometimes are exempt, state aircraft, like the ITC bring their Kodiak up here sometimes.
Federal, federal, all federal aircraft.
Federal stuff are exempt, right? And we get a little bit of that, but not hell of a lot. The guys from Fairchild come over in their geewee sometimes, but we don't get a lot of traffic. So, again.
Why, there's a, there's a Kodiak at Paris right now.
Yeah, I know there is.
Again, I think if we were to charge the people that are already paying county hangar rent, it would be like double dipping.
I agree. Even at their below-market rents?
Not for long, buddy, not for long.
It's all to injury by doing landing fees.
Well, it seems to me like, what I would argue if I was on the other side of that is, it's just one more way that the county is competing against private interests at the airport, if we are more of a conservative type of county, that they're like, oh, by the way, not only do you get this rate, but you also, none of your aircraft are charging landing fees. Like, this is pretty handy.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that. Is there any of the airports that exempt local? Like I said, for me, again, my argument isn't about me, because I don't fly anything usually over six thousand pounds, usually. But is there any exemption for local-based aircraft?
Yeah, often airports exempt based aircraft.
Even those that are in the heavier category?
In the weights, right, in the weights.
Did you, did you say that? And did he say that?
Often they exempt based aircraft.
Okay.
Now, part of that is because most of the airports that do that, those based aircraft are paying some sort of maintenance fee in the form of a hangar lease or a land lease. At our airport, we have a significant presence on the west side that is not on airport. We have another mechanism to charge them. It's a significant, significant presence in terms of the size of the aircraft and the number of operations. I'm talking about Kodiak, all the folks in Omni Park, and in Sandpoint Airport. And Silverwing, frankly. There's not a lot of going on there yet, but there will be a, presumably at some point, I hope so. Though, we have another mechanism for those, and that is the through-defense agreement that they will have to be signing. And my preference would be to charge them maintenance fees in the through-defense agreement, rather than in a structure like this. So if we use, rather than having an exemption for based aircraft, if we use the weight structure, the weight, the weights of those aircraft to exempt them, that might be more equitable.
Yeah, so if you look at, like, say, because, you know, at the end of the day, DIAIR is a massive employer, and they're a massive benefit to the airport, right, and to the community as a whole. I mean, so you look at them, and that's why I would almost, not just for them, but also make sure we cover basically anything that a private person that's kind of based here is really going to be flying for the most part, you know, I, I would, I would push to either eight or nine thousand pounds and below, kind of like what most of the airports around here do.
Yeah, I would agree.
Would say, hey, anything below that, there's nothing. And then that way, it just covers all those things.
Probably covers a lot of the citations coming in for.
Oh, it wouldn't cover the citations. It wouldn't cover the citations.
Wouldn't.
No.
Are they all heavier than nine thousand?
Yeah, I think so.
It covers the Beavers, the Kodiak, privately.
It covers most of those, and most, pretty much everybody that's, that's locally.
But you guys, you guys might cover.
Uh, that won't cover, I don't think it'll cover a PC-12, it won't cover a King Air ninety.
A PC-12, oh, yeah, they're over nine thousand.
Yeah, it will cover like a King Air two hundred. Caravan, I don't know what a caravan is, but, you know, we don't get too many of them.
But if it's a Grand Caravan, it might.
Yeah, maybe. The, but I think if you, if you were to look at charging just less than, you'd pick either eight or nine, I think that kind of makes the most sense. There's a lot of people have twins that are over six thousand pounds, too. Or over five thousand pounds. Most twins are over five thousand.
Or you can make it real easy, twelve-five, or anything that's type rated, requires a type rating, there you go.
Twelve-five, yeah, you can do something like that. I, you know, and I'm not opposed to, to having landing fees for some of those aircraft, and they're actually, like Dave said, they are used to it now. So it's not going to be a massive surprise, but if, you know, a flight school brings in a twin, and now, next thing you know, they're getting charged every single time that they land, you're going to have a lot of pushback.
Well, or they're going to change their behavior and bring in more planes that are lighter weight.
Yeah, or they're just going to not base here. They're just not going to base here.
Yeah.
You know, at the end of the day. And I think the, the seven-dollar rate is, even if you look at Aspen or some of those other airports, that's that's astronomical compared to what everybody else.
About nine thousand pounds.
I guess I would be opposed, if we increase that weight.
So the little eclipse, the.
There's a lot more exclusivity to all the local people and.
Wouldn't it be nice to get a commitment from the county that they're just not going to reduce funding by the amount? So we can actually use it for what we need to use it for, like pavement and improvements and soap removal.
Lighting and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, all the stuff that we desperately need.
So that comes from that guy right there.
This one?
Yeah, I mean, seriously, he makes a recommendation, the commissioners just say yea or nay. They do pick out the bigger numbers and, and, you know, exclude some of the bigger numbers. But he, he represents what's the most important thing, and to be quite honest, that the county has put a ton of money at the Sandpoint over the last five years, or six years, or eight years, or whatever it is.
And is doing significantly more in the future. You guys heard me talking about that. We have improvements to the tune of nineteen million dollars at our airports over the next ten years. There's a significant county match involved in that. And.
What is it, five or ten?
It depends on the, the great year. The state fluctuates somewhat. For the feds, it's always ten percent. We have never paid in my time here, we have never had to make up that ten percent. It's always been between five and seven and a half percent that we've had to make up. But even at that, it's, we're still talking over a million bucks we're going to have to come up with in the next ten years to just keep up with the maintenance and operations and demand at the airport. So when I, you know, we, we can talk about what's happening at Bonner's, or what's happening at Coeur d'Alene, or what's happening at Deer Park, but we really have to be conservative what's happening at our airport and what's coming. We have a, we have a west-side taxiway we have to build, have to build. That's going to be a five million dollar project. We have the runway reboot, it's going to be close to five million, because it's mostly there already. It's going to be close to five million bucks for that, those two projects alone.
We're going to run out of time, but I would, I would recommend that, so if you're looking at those things, or I think it's going to be easier to swallow, kind of like what Coeur d'Alene did, which they said, here's a tower support fee, we're doing landing fees based on tower support fee, you could do something like that, and it'd be like taxiway improvement fee, you know, I mean, this is, it's going towards this, it's not just, oh, we just want more money. We just, it's, there's going, there's a purpose there. And then the other thing I would recommend, before we run out of time, would be, we should probably come together with like maybe three or four proposals for landing fees, and now we have something to build on.
Well, that was the reason that we have this interactively, so that we can change that. So if you guys want to, let's just say we exempt everything below nine thousand.
What does that actually amount to, right? I guess.
Well, and that's the dollar figure, right? That's the thing, is that it's not a hell of a big difference in the dollar figure, I don't think.
So I'll tell you one thing, the commissioner, I don't know a commissioner around that wouldn't be positive about like a capital improvement, and it's listed as what it is for. So that it's just put in there, and it's every year.
earmarked for that.
You're, you're, you're moving that ahead, putting hopefully a little bit more in so that you can build a, a fund to actually do that. The problem is, is other stuff comes up, and it's, you know, I mean, it's like, oh, hey, we need another five hundred thousand for this.
The load is down.
It's like, hey, wait a minute, what about that over there, you know, so.
Well, I think we, we've had more of that in the past, because pavement maintenance in particular at the airports had been deferred for probably twenty-five years, literally twenty-five years.
When we thought we were getting a new runway, so we deferred it some more.
Right, but the last time we did that, the runway repair, which was three hundred and some odd thousand dollars.
Almost four hundred.
We were, that's good for about, at least ten years. We did it so that we don't have to do it again for at least ten years. And in that ten-year span, presumably, the FAA will do the runway again. So I'm very comfortable that most of our major maintenance and repair issues are behind us. It's new construction that we're looking at now. Doing the runway, the FAA will fund, and then that west-side taxiway.
Just the match.
The match for that, right. But again, it's, it's still significant, and we are putting together a fund, just what you talked about, that we will be able to build an account, and we'll be able to build money on it.
You guys stop talking in two seconds.
So we don't have to stop.
We're kidding.
Do you guys have another meeting in here at noon?
No, but they're probably thinking about lunch. There isn't anything really going on, the parking lot is empty.
We going in ten minutes? Or is it, are you like?
It's set an hour to an hour and a half.
Okay, so, and again, we don't have to come up with a recommendation on landing fees today. We do have, I think it's very beneficial to have this discussion, and it's a great discussion.
Yes, for sure.
It's, I, I see things as, because it's my job, to look at all of the, you know, kind of have a universal look at it. What do we need to do to maintain, improve and maintain the airports? And what fee structure do we have that we can get there from? We are, we pay, our revenue stream now covers basically cost of operations, diesel fuel, repairs on the equipment, some pavement repairs and like that, but it doesn't cover any of our capital improvements. We're about, we tap into the county coffers about a couple hundred grand every year, paid for out of, not our revenue stream. Now, the argument is, the airport's an economic engine, and probably has a greater economic impact than the entire county budget.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
Okay, that's great. So we can justify tapping into the general fund, but we should be able to look at all of our revenue sources and people that are willing to pay these fees, and are already paying them in other airports. It's, it's untapped revenue.
Yeah, I agree.
Now, we can adjust the, the rates however we want, and again, I took out, just for reference here, I took out everything below nine thousand, and it changed our net from fifty-five thousand to fifty thousand.
Great.
Not, because there's not a lot of traffic in that weight range.
That's.
Almost all of the traffic, all the heavy traffic is the heavier stuff.
That's still charging seven dollars, which, even though Aspen charges eight, and so does Jackson Hole, that's still way, way, way above the market. So I think you'd also have to, I think you're getting a lot of pushback. Well, maybe you won't get any, I don't know.
So maybe you drop it down, too, but then you look at the number.
Yeah.
Because at some point, if you, if you fiddle with it too much, it's not even worth doing.
Well, I'll tell you what, so why do we want to go through all this?
If you knocked it down to five and three.
What's, what do you, what do you, what is an average? I mean, maybe we should address this next time we get together, but let's look at an average.
We can do some calculations.
And let, you know, and let's take, you know, throw out the tops, you know, the tops and the, and the bottoms.
Yeah, throw out the bottoms, or even the ones that aren't charged, a couple of the ones that aren't charging, and then.
And if we're somewhere in that average, we're probably appropriate. We might lose a little of that fifty.
You could just go, do a circle in the United States, two hundred miles, three hundred, or say five hundred miles, and just do a spreadsheet, and be like, here, here's the average, and.
How often does the rate get adjusted, too?
So just so you guys understand what we're talking about here, the top operators out of, in Sand, this is in Sandpoint. The top operators who would be affected by this are Flex Jets, Net Jets, I don't know who this is. And they were, so Flex Jets had a dollar a thou, per thousand pounds. Flex Jets was at eleven hundred and fifty bucks. That's just as a, a ratio of how many operations. A ratio of how many operations, yeah. And that's at one dollar per thousand pounds. Uh, Net Jets was at eight hundred and twenty-two, the next highest one was at four fifty. Kodiak was at two fifty-nine. So what, what I'm showing here is the, the dollar values are going to stay with Net Jets, Flex Jets, and those guys. They're going to stay with the operators. And all those guys do is pass that cost on to the customer. Nobody's going to care.
No, you're wrong. So it's, it's far, if it's seven, eight bucks. And so here's what the problem is, that you're going to end up having, so it's going to charge, so if we're charging hundred and eighty dollars more than Coeur d'Alene for that same jet to land.
They're going to land in Coeur d'Alene.
You better believe they're going to push to land in Coeur d'Alene.
And that's, and that could affect you especially.
Well, yeah, I know it affects everybody.
And I know, but I agree with what you're saying, is we shouldn't push people away because of obnoxiously.
They get the behavior it's going to create.
No, yeah, yeah, and, and it, they will.
We don't want to draw them in, if anything.
Especially if Net Jets and Flex Jets are actually paying it, right, at the end of the day, because they're just getting charged in Net Jets and Flex Jets. So let's say they're coming in, and if they have a choice to go between here and there, they're going to be like, well, you know, the weather's good, let's just go land here, you know what I mean?
And make their client drive up from Coeur d'Alene? I find that hard to believe.
It's.
They might start setting up cars for them for a while, you know, I mean.
They do actually already do that quite a bit, not because of our fees, but just because.
How far off, I would hate to go bring Coeur d'Alene again, but how much more would it be?
Coeur d'Alene's charging two dollars and seventy-five cents a foot.
And we want to go.
Seven dollars.
So, and again, it's, it could be Coeur d'Alene's not properly accessing that resource.
Coeur d'Alene just supported, just increased theirs in two thousand twenty-four.
They just increased it to that?
Just that. Pullman is, Pullman, which is another comparable one, right, and so they're at a dollar seventy-five, that's for scheduled, so they're a dollar twenty-five per pound. We're talking seven dollars.
But they're going down, too, right? They're taking in all of them.
We'll say that again.
The littler ones.
No, they're not. Nothing below.
Hard to keep track of them.
Yeah, no, they're, they're not. So everything below seven thousand pounds, they don't charge anything for. So a dollar twenty-five above that.
Jeff, can I ask you a question as a former county commissioner? What is the, and I think it's kind of similar for a lot of county commissioners that have county airports, is the airport seems like a, a stepchild that they don't really want to deal with, you know? But when it, when I consider, when you look. But when it, when I consider, when you look at Sandpoint Airport, it probably has one of the strongest economic engines for airports in the state of Idaho, probably short of Boise.
It's number two.
Number two, okay. So with the, with the amount of revenue or economic impact it has, why do the commissioners not look at it and, and provide the funding necessary?
I think we do. I think they have, and I think they.
But if we're having to charge obnoxious fees, then we're not.
Right.
I mean, if Coeur d'Alene can do it, why can't we?
Well, here's what I'm going to tell you is that the commissioners actually don't, don't have any idea. They rely on Dave or whoever, this board, to kind of say, to kind of guide that.
We need more help, yeah.
So when I was here, one of my biggest things, and I talk to Dave about it quite frequently, is, hey, we've got two airports. Tell me that Cootie County has that. So you've got two draws, you know, and is that, is that even necessary? I mean, okay, let's just throw that out of there then.
Fair statement, yeah.
Now let's start talking about, the goal would be, even though, yeah, it's a, we all know, it's a, it's a fueller of the economy, but so are a lot of other things. How about the hill? So do we offer in the hill a discount because look how much money they bring to it?
We don't charge a toll to get to the hill.
That's right.
Well, but we could look at it.
There's property taxes, right? And so, I mean, that's a perfect example.
No, it isn't, because it's a use, because you're flying an airplane in, you're landing, you're using this that not everybody in the county uses. That hill is charging to the people that use it, it's a use fee.
Yeah, but, but the county's not charging an extra use fee to the people that use the hill.
Right.
Well, but they're not reducing it either. They're not saying, hey, man, they're a big taxpayer, why shouldn't we reduce theirs?
But we're not reducing, we're just increasing.
Well, that has come up, though. I mean, we're talking about increasing it, but over the years, what comes up is, is, well, why aren't the users paying for that?
Yeah.
And it's like, well, they do, but do they pay enough? Who knows?
Yeah.
Everybody can say yes, no.
That's what this exercise is about.
Yeah, totally.
Right? That's what we're going to come up with. So if we knock it down to, just so you, I brought my computer just so we could do these analyses. If we knock it down to three dollars per thousand at nine thousand and above, that to the airport is twenty-three thousand dollars a year.
So it's about half, a little less than half, yeah.
Yeah, because we were at seven before three.
And I would think three dollars is about the max is what we can charge for.
Coeur d'Alene's forty-six minutes away from here.
Well, and McCall, which is really probably our best example within the area, is because they've got two ski resorts, they got a lake, they got that. There's a smaller town, but still they've got, and there's a ton of money on the lake, all that. They're a buck and a quarter, right? And nothing below eight thousand pounds. Um, but the, not saying that we charge a buck and a quarter, I mean, I'm not opposed to charging landing fees.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but at one point, Coeur d'Alene, I think they got rid of it, they may have gotten rid of it, but they had an actual line item for the airport.
They did.
In their taxes. But they still do?
Up, no, up until about five years ago, they had, they were on your tax bill, your county tax bill, everybody in Cootie County paid for the airport.
Right.
But not anymore?
Not anymore.
So they did away with it.
Changed their fee structure so they didn't have.
But they did away with it.
They did.
But let's, let's be logical here. A lot of the infrastructure and the things that were done in Coeur d'Alene were paid for by that. So that allows them to be in a more competitive spot.
What's Coeur d'Alene again?
Coeur d'Alene, two seventy-five, and nothing below.
It's a big deal, three bucks is not a big deal at all.
No, three dollars, I think is fair. I think three dollars is about, for everything above nine thousand pounds.
It isn't a lot of money either.
But that's the problem.
It reduces it down.
And, and that's the thing you have to keep in mind, it's not the fee itself, it's the volume of traffic that comes into the airport. Coeur d'Alene gets ten times the volume.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not much more.
A hundred and fifty thousand bucks rather than twenty-three thousand.
Do they react when we react? I mean, like, we, the city bumpers up to three, are they going to say, hey, you know what?
Yeah, they'll just, at their next meeting, they'll be like, well, Coeur, Sandpoint's three, and we're a bigger airport than them, how come we're not charging?
And we're getting more traffic, we could be making more.
We're making more.
And then we just.
They're all getting more.
Exactly. It's, and that's, that's exactly what we're supposed to be doing, actually. We're supposed to be looking at the region, looking at our local economic needs. And for me, that's always been the biggest issue. What, where can we get money based on the volumes that we have?
Yeah.
And if like Coeur d'Alene's ten times the traffic, they can have low fees. If they're tax subsidized, they can have low fees. People used to say, well, how come your rates, your lease rates are so high when Coeur d'Alene's so low? I'm like, well, because every taxpayer in Coeur d'Alene, in Cootie County is paying for the airport.
Yeah, but McCall and Pullman and all these other ones still have simply less than Coeur d'Alene and probably the same amount of traffic as us, and they're charging even half of what Coeur d'Alene.
I know it's a lesser number, but it's more a reasonable number and it's better than nothing. And it's not like it's a fixed number, like we're not going to change in later years. Might be a nice entry, you know, the bridge.
I, I do want to touch on something that you mentioned earlier about the commissioners recognizing the economic value of the airport. The commissioners do recognize and have been very supportive of everything I've asked for for probably the last twelve years or so. Earlier than that, when I first started, the commissioners did not have, and it wasn't a question of meanness on their part, it was, they did not have the education or the understanding of the economic value of the airport.
Yeah.
But that's been, the commissioners, I'm going to say, over the last twelve or thirteen years have been very, very good and very understanding.
Because you inform them, you educate them on that.
Well, that was a key issue, was helping them understand the value of it. And then, once they understood it, it's not just a rich man's playground. Once they understood it, then they're like, oh, yeah, oh, wow, this is huge.
This is real, yeah.
But it's still a, it's a real, no matter what the situation is, it's, the argument is made every year, and it's a reasonable argument that, well, geez, we don't put any money into the water, we don't put enough money into docks and, and different, you know, launch areas and stuff like that, in comparison to the airport, you know? I mean, trust me, all these discussions get hot.
Oh, I'm sure.
And it's all like, well, how come that is?
Yeah.
What drives this? Is that not also an economic driver? Of course it is. So how do you, how do you try to organize that to where it all works? It's like, you know, they're, they're struggling right now. And this is something that I'll warn you about, and we're all looking at it, is like their parks, you know, like the Bonner Park West, you've probably seen it in the paper where they're discussing handing that off to the city or a possibility of handing it off to the city. And then the city is going to turn around and probably lease it to somebody, or not probably, is going to, because we can't afford, we want all that stuff and we want our, the people that live in the area to be able to benefit from that. We can't, we can't pay for even maintenance of it. And neither can the county, that Water Park West right now is really run down because they haven't invested anything into it. It's all great, it's just like Sandpoint with their big fancy thing that they just built. They can't maintain it. So guess what, boys? If, if we can't figure out, if we're not smart enough to figure out a way to make sure that this thing isn't a drain, you're going to be looked at and you're going to be looked at every year to say, well, why don't we just lease the whole damn thing out to somebody else? Let them do it. And it's, it is what Coeur d'Alene's looking at for their launches and their beaches. It's what Post Falls has already done. Everybody's looking at, we can't do this anymore, we can't continue down this road when police have gone up three times in the last six years. You, you gotta make choices and they're tough. But anyway, sorry to get on to some kind of.
And I know we're biased, I get it. And every one of our commissioners become pilots and own airplanes and then they'll be biased. So we don't have to, no, I get it. It's, it's, it's one of the biggest challenges. And you just know that in every county and city, the airport seems to be the stepchild because it's just a rich kid's playground. And the truth is, it's an economic engine, but most people don't see it that way. And I get that, I understand it. I don't understand it, but I, I recognize why they think that.
It's so hard to put an actual number to it. I mean, everybody can throw a dart at the, at the wall and say, hey, it's, it's fifty million dollars, but God, it's hard.
You know, I think one of the differences with Sandpoint, and you already said this, being number two, is that between Dyer, Camrak Aerospace, Timberline Helicopters, which is going to be growing, three big aviation businesses on the airport, the amount of the number of employees, I mean, it's four hundred, probably.
We are two hundred and fifty ourselves. I think Timberline's got eighty. Now, the thing about Timberline is that you don't see them at the airport because they're scattered in seven different buildings all around.
Right.
But they're going to be, that's why they're doing this big expansion.
Camrak, I think, has forty-five.
Yeah, it's huge. I mean, it's huge.
So how do you calc that, though? How do, so the idea is, well, you've got employees, they've bought houses, they pay taxes, they do this, they do that. But to be quite honest, I don't think that number is the way it used to be because we have tons of people, they're not employees, they're up here retiring, they're up here with money. It's a different game out there right now, and I don't know when the last time they did that. And I, I, I don't really want to downplay this, but I want to get, have an honest conversation about, hey, how much this has changed in the last five years is, it's dramatic.
Yeah.
It's like, okay, say, say somebody goes away and five hundred employees go away, how much change do you think that's going to be for the county?
Cold War Creek went away, that was massive, too.
It was, but it was at a time when it made a difference. Right now.
I mean, it reduced property values, it was that big.
Right, right now, the people that are trying to get employees can't get employee, can't get enough employees. So, I mean, as we're talking about bringing more, you know, business to this, this county, it's like, okay, wait a minute, let's talk about this and think about it. Because if you bring something that has three hundred employees, you're just robbing everybody else's. There isn't magically three hundred employees coming to Sandpoint. Because most of them had to be here already because they can't afford to buy.
Exactly.
I'm just being, I'm just being logical here.
Ten years ago.
Well, when you, when I got there, which was sixteen years ago, we had three hundred and sixty-five employees. That was way too many. We should be just on, just right or close to three hundred. Two eighty, two ninety, somewhere in there, the count for attrition and.
Are you trying to fill any positions right now?
Hell, yes.
And are you having a lot?
Hell, no.
Okay.
And you know what?
I don't.
People can't afford to live here. Not live here, they can't afford to buy a house here.